Okay, we call to order the February 25th meeting of 2013. District 99 Board of Education, call the roll please. We already did, that's right, we already kicked the ball. Close session, we do have a forum. So this time, we will rise and recite the Board of Education's.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two business meetings, a closed meeting, a special workshop meeting, and a closed meeting. Any comments, corrections, updates to the minutes? If there are none, the Chair would invite a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Actually, there is one. I saw just one, I think it should be a correction.
Which date is it?
Oh, actually, I think maybe she corrected.
She probably did correct it, whatever.
Yep, I think you did. Because earlier, yeah, it had the wrong name, it had Lisa Smith rather than Lisa McCartney. Okay. Oh, no, actually, no, actually, it's still there. Right under in the very first, the first one, the business meeting.
Yeah, the business meeting, January 20.
And right under Bullet Point Six, Annual Energy Conservation Report.
I was gonna call you today, I didn't get that done.
It says Marty Schack presented an overview and history of the energy management program in District 99 noting that Lisa Smith, a South High Biology, it should read Lisa McCartney.
That's what we're doing now.
Unless Lisa's, you know, two people.
That was the only thing I noticed.
Okay, anything else? Okay, with that indicated correction, the Chair invites a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Member Beckman moves.
Second.
Member Pavlicic, seconds. Call the vote, please.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Terry Pavlicic?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Bill White?
Aye. That motion passes, the minutes are approved. Item five on our agenda is our first reception of visitors. If there's anybody in the audience wishes to speak to us about a matter on the agenda this evening, come to the microphone. Okay, we can close the first reception of visitors. We move on to item six, recommendations and reports to the superintendent. Six A is the PBIS presentation. Dr. McDonald, hand it to you, and you'll hand it on.
Thank you, Mr. White. As the Board is aware, we got in, the district got involved in the PBIS program two years ago. The first year was a planning year, last year was the first year of implementation. Now, we're in the second year of implementation. One of the hallmarks of this program is that the schools in the school district keeps data about the things that are the special issues that these schools are focusing on, and not only keeps that data but reports about that data periodically to the staff and the Board of Education and through the Board of the Community. So, Mr. Whitehead is responsibility for this program in the district, and I'm going to ask him to make a report about the findings of our data collection for the first semester.
Thank you, Dr. McDonald. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'll be sharing with you the PBIS data for the first semesters, a three-year comparison from 2010, 2011, 2011, 2012, and 1213. As Dr. McDonald pointed out, that here in the district, we collect data for PBIS purposes to examine the success of PBIS. The first year, 2010, 2011, was our planning year. The first year of implementation was 2011, 2012, and 1213 is our second year of implementation. Here we have the famous PBIS triangle that everyone's been familiar with. The 80% to 90% of our students in the Tier One. The next is the 5 to 15% in the yellows, Tier Two, and the top level is Tier Three, 1 to 5% of our population, the academic on the left and behavior systems on the right. Through the PBIS system, we expect that the majority of our students will be able to receive the support at the, in the green area. Secondary portion is for the students, between 5 and 15% are those students that needed some additional support, some of our at-risk populations in the top level are those. It's very few individual students that we may need some additional support as well. Some examples are Special Education Services, 504 plans, et cetera. Some keynotes for this presentation, that this is district-wide data, this is not via buildings. I do have that data, but I'm, for the purpose of this report, I'm showing it district-wide. As I said, this is a three-year first semester data comparison, so we'll be looking at the first semesters of the last three years of PBIS. The Code B violations and the actions or consequences reflect the number of individual students that received a Code B violation or action, not the number of violations or actions. So when you see these, these are individual students that were consequence or either received an action or a violation. Once again, just to reiterate the timeline again, the first year was kickoff, last year was first year of implementation, and implementation for the second year as well. So as you see here, the blue is the first year, 1011, the red is 1112, and the green is 1213. These are the total A and B code violations. A is our minor infractions and B our major infractions. As you see, there is a decrease from 1011 down to 1213. In 1011, there were 4,816 total violations in the first semester. This first semester, we had a total of 3,219. That's a difference of 1,597 referrals, or a decrease of 33%. The next shows our top five A code violations. This is a comparison by year. As you see, the first area is tardies, the next area is attendance, the next is failure to serve detention, then we have dress code, cellphone violation, and then failure to serve Saturday detention. As a note, dress code violation only showed up in 2010, 2011 school year. It was not a top-five code violation the last two years. So there was a reduction in the number of dress codes for that. Based on the graph that you see, excessive tardies showed the greatest reduction. We had 988 of those in 2010, 2011. This past semester, 1213, we only had 415. So that's a decrease of 573 violations, or 58% in that area. Failure to serve detention, there were 663 in school year 1011, and in the first semester of this school year, there were 400, which is a decrease of 263 violations, a 40% decrease. Failure to serve Saturday detention, there were 321 in 2010, 11, and this past semester, there are 231. Over 90 violations decreased, or 28% decrease. And then finally, the area of use of cellphone or pagers, there were 368 in 1112, the first year it showed up. This past semester, there were 237, which is 131 decrease in violations, or a 36% decrease. Next are our B code violations. These are our major code violations. These usually tend lead to a detention or a suspension, or possibly expulsion from school. As you see on the far left, using vulgar language or gestures, there were a total of 61 in 2010, 2011, and 49 in 1213, a 20% decrease. And just to make a note, that when we look at the B code violations, given the size of our district, we have very few total B code violations. So, when you're looking at the numbers, these are individual students that were consequence or either, or either violated a B code violation, so the numbers are very, very small, so that's a good thing. Even starting off in our 2010, 2011, so any decreases that you see are a great improvement. The next area, lying or trying to deceive a staff member, we had 48 in 2010, 11, and only 38 in 1213, which is a 21% decrease. And then, as a note, we had assault and battery or reckless conduct or fighting were noted in 1011, but they did not show up as a top-five B code violation in 1112 or 1213.
Really? Very good.
Next are the actions. This is the first time we've discussed actions from PBIS. These are students that received a detention, they received a Saturday detention, a warning, or possibly they received a out-of-school suspension. And those are the top four areas. So if you look at this, at this, at this graph, on the left, once again, is 1011, the middle is, in red, is, is 1112, and the green is 1213. There was a total decrease, as you can see, we had 2,923 total actions in the first semester of the 1011 school year. In the first semester of this school year, 1213, we had 2,436, which is a difference of 487, or a 17% decrease over the last three years during the first semester. This graph shows all the different actions that students received, and as you can see as a, as the graph shows, there's a decrease in all of the four areas of, of actions that students received: detentions, Saturday detentions, warning, and out-of-school suspensions. As far as the detention show, we had 785 in the first semester of 1011. The first semester this year, we had 623, so 21% decrease. Saturday detentions, we had 576 in 1011, and this year, during the first semester, we had 393. That's a 32% decrease. In the area of the warnings, there were 526 warnings, students that received a warning in 1011. This semester of the 1213 school year, only 242 students received a warning, which is a 54% decrease. And finally, the out-of-school suspension, this is an area that we should always note because these are students that are losing valuable instruction time because they're not in school. We had 313 out-of, students that received an out-of-school suspension in the 1011 school year. This school year, during the first semester, we had 244, which is a 22% decrease. Well, some of the summaries and highlights, so overall decrease in total A and B code violations of 1,597. Excessive tardiness went down, 573 between 1011 and 1213. Failure to serve detention, there were a difference of 263 from 1011 to 1213, and that had the greatest reductions out of all the A and B code violations. Once again, just to note, very few students received B code violations in District 99, given our population of 5,100 students, which is great to say, and we see a decrease in that, so that's even better. The overall decrease in total number of students that received an action or consequence between 1011 to 1213 during the first semester was 487. Then finally, the number of students that received an out-of-school suspension decreased from 313 to 244, and that's another important fact because now we have more students that are in the classroom and they're not being suspended for any actions. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Davenport.
I'm wondering if we've ever looked at, in addition to the year-over-year comparisons, but, but tracking a class from one year to the next, to the next, to see if there's improvement that way as well.
No, we haven't looked at that. We are able to do that because the way that we can look at the demographics of the data, we can look at classes, so if that's something that you'd like to see, we, I could present that as well to you in the future.
I think it might demonstrate even, you know, to a greater extent, the progress we're making because you look at that same group of students, and as they're moving along, we see improvement there.
As they're maturing.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly.
You know, I mean.
Any questions?
I have one, I can't remember where it was. This is really very heartening, very heartening data.
Okay, the second item on the board's report is textbook recommendations. Dr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. White. At this time of the year, in fact, in recent years, we've done this multiple times each year. We make recommendations to the Board for textbooks for the upcoming school year. This is really an opportunity for the Board to ask questions about the books. We are not putting them on the agenda as an action item because they have to be on display for 30 days as per Board policy. We do have a number of books this year, we're addressing several different areas. I think a lot of the courses that these books are aligned to should be familiar with you because we've recently approved courses that are going to use these books. Dr. Minor, do you want to review?
Very good. As per the memo, it describes the process that we take it through, and again, this is just the first blush for the textbooks. These will then be on display for 30 days, and pending your approval tonight, we'll get that information out to the newspaper so the public at large know that they have the opportunity to come in and take a look at the books that are on display. The books that we do have, as Dr. McDonald had noted, are referenced based upon the need of the Common Core integration, which we talked about, the foundations for Math One, that's as a result of that. Some of the other books are as a result of the AP audit. In order for us to offer AP, last year, they changed the ruling that textbooks have to be no later than 10 years old. So that's why you'll see the AP chemistry on there. The AP Physics Mechanics C, that's a new course, as well as the Honors Accounting, those are new courses. The Accounting One and Two and Business Law, those were initially projected back in 2010, 11, for, to be brought to this process, but they were brought as of this time. So those, those have been on the docket, and their time is due. AP Economics, certainly, having a book from '97, that's problematic, and American Government, a lot's happened since 1993, so we need to make sure that our students have access to that. So this, again, is the recommendation based upon many, many hours of work from building staff, as well as department chairs, as well as the Curriculum and Instruction Committee to vet it, to make sure that we're bringing the most up-to-date, as well as useful books for our students at this point in time.
Okay, so there's no action this evening, just an opportunity for us to ask questions if we wish to. Okay, any questions?
Go ahead, Chair. Just a question, do we have any feel yet for how many students might be interested in the AP Physics Mechanics only?
Yes.
Yes.
And why, is, is it?
Actually, we have 105 students that are signed up for it, 40 from North and 65 for South.
That's great.
That was one of the reasons why we offered that as a new class.
Yeah, because you knew there was, there was going to be a demand for it. That's great.
My question is a silly question. How does Accounting One and Two have a copyright of 2014, when?
They're not out yet.
I thought it was only the 13.
We're able to get preview copies, and so all of these copies will be able to be on display. I think you might recall, last year, there were some copies that we didn't have until later in the spring, and so we held off them and had a second viewing.
Okay.
That will take place this year as well for the Math One books. Those are currently being vetted by our department chairs, in concert with some of our sender districts to take a look at it as well. So in April, I'll come back to you with a recommendation for the Math One, that's the Common Core Integrated Math One textbook.
Okay. Interesting.
I thought it was interesting that it was more stupid stuff.
We're on the cutting edge.
Great.
Granted, I've only been on the Board for coming up on a couple of years, but I don't recall ever seeing any, any comments being offered from the public on any of the texts that we've, is that a fair statement?
On occasion, people come and review the books. Typically, not a lot of people come, but we offer the opportunity.
I'm just, I don't recall, at least since I've been on the Board, actually, there was one last year that somebody made a comment about, so. So, and they're on display here at the ASC?
They'll be on display here at the ASC.
And the libraries.
And in the libraries, so we're making a very assessment.
Well, the legal notification will be posted at the libraries that they need to come.
But the books are here.
Right, exactly.
I have a question that's probably just for maybe the larger general public. When we, because we have probably more questions, I think, out of summer reading books than we probably do anything else. And they can, people can get a listing of the summer reading, but do we, are we going to be adding anything, and is there a way, do we do the same process if we're going to add a few summer reading books that have been approved by the English Department? I mean, and then do parents get to peruse those like we do these in the public?
Each school picks their summer reading list a little differently. Typically, the, the school administration and the school board does not approve the summer reading because they're considered supplementary materials. In terms of the timeline for that process, Mrs. Boyle, I couldn't tell you that tonight, but I'd be glad to research that and let you know tomorrow exactly how that's going to work.
Right, I knew that, but I've had a lot of questions, and that's why I want, I asked it in, at the meeting, so people in the public would understand that.
And we can certainly have that, have that discussion at the next workshop meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Now, to the consent agenda, the Chair invites a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Member Pavlicic moves that the consent agenda be accepted.
I'll second it.
Member Beckman, seconds, call the vote, please.
Terry Pavlicic?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Bill White?
Aye. The motion carries, the consent agenda has been approved. Turning to item 8A on the agenda, approval, approval of staffing ratios for the 13, 14 school year. Dr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. White. Each year, the administration asks the Board to approve the staffing ratio. Essentially, what that means is that's a ratio of faculty to students, and that determines essentially how many teachers we hire to staff our classrooms. And it's typically made about this time of year, because from after taking that ratio, we'll complete the process of determining how many teachers we will hire, how many courses we'll offer, how many sections of those courses, and so on. And that's, as you know, a big process for March. Dr. Smith, will you make this report?
I would be happy to. If I can have you scroll down to the second page of the memo, the first offers some background information on staffing, but the Board has, all the members of the Board currently have been through staffing, so I thought I would go through the charts on the second page. Remember, back in 11, 12, we, and 10, 11, we returned to a 22 to 1 ratio, and we did find that to be somewhat tight in both buildings. So last year, we made a slight adjustment to a ratio of 21.8 to 1. And while it doesn't sound like a lot, it did seem to give the schools that, that little bit of room and flexibility that they needed for staffing. And even with a proposed ratio that we use as our overall framework, there's always that recognition that what happened a couple of years ago where we had, you know, unanticipated enrollment, that there could be a need for additional staff in the buildings. But our CASADA numbers are relatively new. If you remember, you know, a couple of years back, we updated that, and in looking at the CASADA numbers, we're running, we're running close to trend in what's anticipated. So I would like to recommend that we continue with the 21.8 again. And in the first chart in the top of the page, you'll see CASADA B trends and projections. You'll see that the projected enrollment for 13, 14 at 5,144, down approximately 10 students, again, based on CASADA numbers. And based on that slight decrease, overall, it would be a decrease of 236.4 FTE to 236. This is not counting all those extra FTE, this is not special ed and all the, what we will talk about again in March as below-the-line positions. These are, for the most part, our content area teachers. What we also took into consideration last year and again this year is in the second chart under Roman numeral three. In the first column, you'll see the numbers that are just straight projections by the CASADA B numbers. In the second column, you'll see what the actual numbers are projected for next year based on the incoming eighth graders, moving the freshmen up, sophomores up, juniors up. So you can see in column one and two, there's a little bit of a difference. So North is trending a little bit ahead, and South was trending slightly below. We do typically see a little bit more mobility in South overall. Last year, that didn't hold true, but when you look at, over a period of time, we do tend to see a little bit more movement in, at North, or at South, my, I'm sorry. In the second to last column, then, if we were to just use CASADA B, we would be assigning 96.5 FTE to North and 139.5 to South based on just projected enrollment for a total of 236. In the last column, you'll see that I differentiated that. I still, I'm still going forward with the recommendation for the 236, but I want to recognize that North is running above trend and South is running a little bit below. And because these are real-time numbers, we feel pretty confident that our numbers are a little bit more accurate right now. So we just made a slight adjustment to North and to South, both buildings, you know, the numbers were shared with North and South, they both felt that those were fair numbers that they could continue to work with. So the, I'm recommending the final column, again, the 236, but the 97.7 being assigned to North and the 138.3 being assigned to South. And when we talk again in March, I will present the below-the-line, and throughout the year, we've talked a lot about Common Core, and the Board has a good sense of what our needs will be in math, and there will be some additional recommendations being presented to the Board to support the Common Core Math Initiative. Some others as well, but certainly that's going to have the biggest impact on FTE. Any questions?
I'm just happy that the CASADA recommended, uh, projections are still running pretty accurately.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's a good thing, so that we can really plan.
Other questions? And if no, we'll be time for a motion to approve, to accept, to approve the recommended heading.
I'll make the motion to approve the staffing ratio for the 2013, 14 school year.
If the Chair moves, Member Davenport, seconds, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Terry Pavlicic?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Bill White?
Aye. The motion carries, the staffing recommendations are approved. Item 8B, approval, Board approval to accept the decision to attempt to retire and approval of new administrative contract. Dr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. White. This agenda item pertains to the end of a multi-year contract for Mark Stalen, the district's controller, and issuance of a new five-year contract for Mr. Stalen, the district's controller.
Okay, let's see, can one motion encompass all three actions?
Actually, it's intended to encompass all the actions.
Okay, the Chair invites a motion to accept the decision of the retirement letter and the replacement of the prior contract with the new multi-year contract.
So moved.
Whoops.
Go ahead. I'll second it.
Okay, Member Beckman moves, Member Pavlicic, seconds. Is there any discussion before we vote? Okay, call the vote, please.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Terry Pavlicic?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
No.
Mike Davenport?
No.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Bill White?
Aye. The motion passes, the contract's been approved. Move on to item 8C, approval of student fees.
Thank you, Mr. White. At about this time every year, we ask the Board to approve student fees for the upcoming school year. As we have in the past two years, we are not going to recommend an increase in school fees.
That's nice.
However, we are interested in perhaps packaging our school fees in a different manner. We think this might be more efficient, and frankly, for a number of students, a little bit less expensive. So, Mr. Stalen has done a lot of work on calculating just what this consolidated fee would be, and I'm going to let him make this presentation about it.
Thanks, and this will be fairly brief, in case you have some questions you'd like me to work on. I've asked Greg to put up the, the main part that'll be different this year, but if we, just to start with the outlook for this year, we do have a couple surprises coming at us that we aren't really, don't really think are surprises, but things that could be curves thrown at us, I guess I should say. The State Board of Education does have an expectation that the general state aid could be cut as much as 20% this year. Fortunately, that's not a huge number for us because we don't get much state aid, but that could be up to $400,000, but we're still thinking we could fall short of that. But our, we have, we have a projected surplus that's roughly $800,000 already for next year. So that would cut that surplus if all that hit us, cut it in half. But we still, and even with some additional FTE considerations that we've made for the Common Core and some other things, we still believe- considerations that we've made for the Common Core and some other things, we still believe that we'll be able to get to a balanced budget without having to raise fees this year. And fees do comprise about 2% of our budget, so it's not, we don't believe with, still with the pension issue unsettled at the state level, that we should do anything drastic with our fees, but we do feel that we could hold the line again this year. And then, we did pick up on a recommendation from last year to try and package it differently. Originally, if you look at last year's memo with the consideration, we would wait until we did maybe make a reduction in fees or repackage them, but we just don't see that happening in the near future. So we decided to go after at least that concept of making it simpler for the parents and possibly recovering some operating costs in the meantime, because we do spend a lot of time when students change from one science class to another, adjusting it through the system, as well as if a student drops a course, it has a lab fee attached to it, issuing refunds. And so there's a lot of processing that goes through that. So it made sense, and particularly this year. In the last couple of months, we've had, the State Board of Education has had a new effort in identifying Medicaid-eligible students and contacting, pushing it down to the schools, and mandating to us that those students become eligible for free and reduced lunch, which means, by our policy and actually by state law, that if they're eligible for free and reduced, that we waive their fees. So we've had a lot of processing of fees in the last four months. A lot of our office has done a lot of that. And so we do expect to actually have a reduction in our total amount of fees, even if we were just to keep things the same, because we will have a higher number of students eligible for free and reduced lunch and then therefore be waived. Not all fees are waived, only fees that pertain to curricular or get credit. And I believe actually, we actually do that for athletics as well, though. So our recommendation is to consolidate that. I did have a first run at the math, and when I passed it through to the assistant principals at the buildings, we were able to talk it through, and I realized I had a mistake in the calculation, so that's why there was a change in the memo. Once we posted it, this is the corrected memo. But the reduction will, actually, by consolidating, there's usually 2.6 lab fee courses other than the English paperbacks. And in English paperbacks, all students are given a series of books, each all the way through every grade level, that we've now pushed that up, and I think we've been doing it for all four years, for a couple of years now. And we charge them a lab fee for that. It doesn't cover the total cost of those books, but it helps us offset that. And, but now, it's been hitting all four grades. We decided just, let's be the first thing we would roll into the registration textbook fee and just encapsulate it in there. And then the other lab courses is just an average. And so there will theoretically be some kids at one level that might not be taking 2.6 labs, or two labs, or might take three. So it's not going to, you know, some, there will be some students and families that for one particular year or the other, might be a winner or a loser. But overall, we think the simplification is there, and it makes sense to do this. And so it comes out to $298 is what the average family of per student pays for the registration textbook and English and other lab-type courses. And because we are going to work hard to try and reduce some of our operating costs with this, we thought, let's just roll it back a little bit. And so we're going to recommend a fee of $290 to cover this. We're going to work through it this year and see how it works out and, you know, perhaps, you know, deal with it again next year if we have to make a change. This would still put us, I think, in the second lowest of all the fee, charging high school systems in DuPage County. Fenton High School, actually, I believe, has a lower fee. It's just been their policy, and they have a higher operating cost per student as well. But it's not something we could, you know, make a big change and become the lowest. But anyways, our recommendation is to go to $290. There's still, I want to make, you know, this won't wrap up every fee. There still will be some add-on fees. There's some courses like Drivers Ed that's just not appropriate to average that out. Some kids take Drivers Ed behind the wheel outside of the district, and so it wouldn't be right to roll and wrap that fee into our combined fee. There's students that take courses that have workbooks. We're actually working through part of the Common Core issues where we have textbooks that are also workbooks now, and so we're going to have, very likely in the next couple of years, we might have to charge some more workbook fees related to that, because the textbook itself will be consumable, it'll be something that we can't recover. Although, the good news is that it's much less expensive per student, so it would probably be very affordable for them to do it that way. Anyways, we're working through some of the headaches that we see down the road. Right now, we recommend making it $290. And then Greg will flip to the last chart. He's going to shrink this in a second here. This is the last chart that you see, just to show you that the other fees, we're not recommending any changes. And the gray shaded is actually the Drivers Ed fee that we reduced just to stay within the state's maximum without having to ask for a waiver. That was changed in 2011, 12. And then for 2013, 14, we recommended that the dark shade, the black shade with the white font, would be the change in our registration textbook fees, and then we would not charge the individual lab fees.
Okay. Any questions before we invite a motion to approve the proposed fees?
It's very clear.
Just have a comment?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, just, I wanted to say thank you. I, we, we're stuck with the fact that next year, there'll be fewer families that'll be paying it, probably, because of the increase in free and reduced lunches and the number of families that are going to be paying it. So easily could have used that as an excuse why we needed to raise the fees. We have a, our Drivers Ed fee that was $300 a year and was reduced to $250 last year, and we're maintaining that when we clearly may have not have done that. And then, by packaging it all together, it does make things simpler for people, and the averages, the result is that you're paying a little bit less. And in our current climate, I think that that's, this is really good news. This is the best we could hope for, and I really appreciate that, and I know the families do too, so.
Well, thanks. To your first point, I want, it is important that we've always, if we've made increases, typically, we've been cost of living increases, and we've been very conscious not to increase our fees because of shifts in the population where there's more students waived, because we don't feel that's fair, you know? And so we've always tried to absorb that somewhere else in the budget, even to the point where we reduce sponsors for clubs, if there's only five or seven kids in a club, you know, things that make sense, you know, to reduce. So we've always looked internally first and not tried to do that. But, so we always do try not to.
And holding the line, too, with the idea that, I mean, certainly, from year to year, prices go up. And as you look at the history here, you know, just holding the line actually constitutes a reduction. So
That's right.
I very much appreciate it. And last year, I didn't vote in support of this, but this year, I absolutely will. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If there are none, the chair invites a motion to approve the scheduled fees as presented.
So moved.
Member Devon for a second. Do you have a second?
Second.
Member Cupka, seconds. Call the vote, please.
Excuse me. Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Chair Pavisich?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Bill White?
Aye. The motion passes. The scheduled fees have been approved. We move now on to item nine, Old Business Policy Committee Report, second reading. We have a number of policies in the Personnel section. As always, Dr. Cupka and I have worked with Dr. Smith and Dr. McDonald to prepare these. We've gotten no comments back. All the policies are really based on our, working with the IASB policy, and some of these are really, are just primarily rules to follow, state law regarding employment. So unless anybody has any questions or concerns, I will move that we adopt the six policies, 530, 535, 570, 580, 5100, 15, 207.
I second.
Member Cupka, seconds. Any discussion?
Thank you for your hard work again.
Yes, indeed.
Call the vote, please.
It has to be a lot of fun.
Oh, we have a riot. For the pizza. We have, we have, we have a pizza. Call the vote, please.
Fun never ends. Bill White?
Aye.
Nancy Cupka?
Aye.
Chair Pavisich?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Okay. We have a bunch of new policies. Ten, Policy Committee Report, first reading. One, two, four, eight. We have eight more, all in the fifth section, which is Personnel. Same speech as always.
Right.
And then, so any questions, comments? Let myself know, Ms. Cupka know, Dr. Smith know, or Dr. McDonald know. And next time we come back, we'll have these up for a vote. Any comments or discussions on those? If not, we'll move to the second reception of visitors. Anybody want to talk to us about anything related to District 9?
Please.
Okay. And then now, we can move on to item 13, upcoming, actually, I'm sorry, 12, Reports and Communications. Dr. McDonald, anything to say about the Lend meeting?
Well, I included a synopsis of some of the discussion in the Friday mailing. Right now, it seems like a lot of the focus in Springfield is on the pension reform legislation, but there is no clear pension reform legislation out there.
I understand there are four, four different bills, right? Something like that.
There are a lot of different bills, and, but they seem to be recycling the same concepts that we've all heard with regard to COLA or benefit cap, or teachers or participants paying higher percentage, or school districts paying the normal cost, and some sort of combination of those. So, and I expect that there will be a lot of action on that this spring, but right now, it's uncertain what's going to happen. There are a couple of interesting pieces of legislation, or more, perhaps more appropriately, rules. One of which involves the, there's been a rule, they call it the 70-30 rule. It's about enrollment of IEP students in a regular ed classroom. If more than 30%, in order for it to be considered a regular ed class, the enrollment needs to be 30% or less. And that's an interest, that's an interest of ours, because we do a lot of co-teaching at the 300 level, including IEP students with regular ed students and having a special ed and regular ed teacher. And that causes us some consternation. We're trying to staff that and still pay attention to this rule. Well, apparently, the court case that necessitated the rule has sunset, and the state superintendent, Dr. Cook, is in favor of relaxing the rule to an extent, but there's also a powerful lobby that wants to keep it in place. So that, that's a very interesting dynamic going on right now at this Illinois State Board of Education. It's not legislation, it's really a rule.
It's a rule.
There's additional, there's legislation, there was legislation pending requiring all schools to have a certified school nurse.
School nurse.
That's also a debated issue. One of the issues, however, is that there are not really enough certified school nurses to go around. There are not enough training facilities in the state of Illinois to prepare them. And so there is obviously a shortage of them, or would be, had this, with this going to effect. There's also a question about whether the certification, whereas a registered nurse or a practical nurse could perform the same function. There's a question about that, because in fact, that's going on in many places at this time. So that's another interesting piece of legislation going on. So I, but the big, the big issue, of course, is the pension legislation, and nobody knows where that's going.
Okay. And SASED report?
We are meeting Wednesday, so I don't have up-to-date reports, but I did attend the open house at the Transition Program facility, which you may know SASED has been working to rehab that. Now, that's a rented facility, because they have the same issues we did in finding permanent space. But it's a great renovation, and it's way better for them than it used to be. So I think it's going to be a nice setting for time to come, and there's even some talk about there might be a chance to expand into the next building. Again, it's SASED money going into a rented facility, but it was, it's a good solution, at least for now, because that transition program keeps growing and growing.
Thank you. And your foundation report?
We're just working on a fundraiser for next year and working on a mailing list, so that's about it.
Okay. Any other reports? Any other comments? Upcoming meetings. Next Monday, we have the open house at North High School. The following Wednesday, a week, a week and a Wednesday later, March 13th, is a special meeting in this building about staffing. And then March 18th will be our regular business meeting for the month of March. Does anybody have, have any of the business come before the board before anybody's motion to adjourn?
I just happened to think of an announcement, not to find a point on it, but I've just been, but I thought it might help the district. I've just been appointed to the Illinois Humanities Council this past week, so I'll be bringing reports. I have not much of an idea what it means at this point, except it's about humanities, and I think that has something to do with education. So I'll be bringing reports to the board about that. We meet in April is the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else? The chair, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Member Pavisich moves.
Second.
Member Devon for a second. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Meeting adjourned.